I'd like to call this regular Tuesday, November 5th, regular meeting for the village trustees order. First thing of order, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I messed up some wires back here.
That's our pageant over there.
Just flipped them over. Consideration of any changes, additions, or removal to the agenda?
We just have one under 7D. It's kind of a formality. We'd like to add the adoption of the local hazard mitigation plan. The state just needs it in the minutes. We've reviewed it at our previous meeting. We just need to have a formal adoption of it. The select board adopted it at their last meeting.
Okay. Approved minutes from previous meetings?
The minutes are September 3rd, 2024.
I would second that. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Comments from citizens? I see none. Department head reports? They all looked looked good. I see we're still dealing with cleanup from the flood.
And one thing, although it's not, we'll make notice as it's not necessarily a wastewater, but it is in the village. They did move, relocate the hydrant on, that was in Village Pizza parking lot today, and that was relocated. That's just down just south of that onto the other property. So I know many of us have avoided backing into that hydrant many of times. So it's no longer going to be an issue.
Had a lot of tires around it.
Yes.
And I did have one question on the sewer. Maybe you don't have the answer. September, we treated 3.2 million gallons and 14 gallons of sludge. In October, we treated 3.1 million gallons and we shipped out 7,000 gallons, so about half. I'm not sure how that works, but.
I believe it has something to do with that. Be honest with you, that we've had, we had an issue with the wastewater plant of some of the organisms and the digestive process that we have been working with. So I think that is a a process as that as we moved forward another 30 days, the process was functioning better. Joe, I've been trying to tweak a few things there. So I think that lower is probably the reason. I don't think that's a complete tributation that it's because it was, it's half as much, but I think it was a large process of it.
That was just curious. Age receivable report?
Still moving in the right direction, everything, you know, some of the, a lot of the numbers there that are higher still kind of current. It's only been really 30, 60 days since the last burn cycle. So we're still making some pretty good headlines with our age receivables.
Yeah.
Saving on top of those.
It's looking a lot better. Good to see. Allocation and possibly approve 119 Main Street Homestyle Hostel. Looking to increase from 24 to 49 seats.
So that is just as it reads, Homestyle Hostel increasing wastewater allocation, 24 to 49 seats. That increases a total consumption gallons per day to 1,125 gallons per day for a rate that they have paid at $5,118.75.
You need a motion to approve that?
We do, yep.
Make a motion to approve the change from 24 to 49 seats.
I would second that. All in favor? Aye. Next one's Old, 80 Old Village Lane. Currently has a three-bedroom allocation. Would like to add one additional bedroom.
So just one bedroom. Additional allocation of $546.
I wanted to ask, Mr. Chairman, when we have some of these additions on, this one and the one after it, I just wondered if it would be appropriate, we thought about having the zoning do like a a CO to see where they're at. Because some of these, there's no structural changes and they're going from like three to five bedrooms. This one's only a one-bedroom increase. But I feel like there's nobody that monitors.
Is this the one?
That says. This one's only the one and it has a diagram.
Yep.
That makes a little more sense, but.
Is that, is that something?
When they do, when they go to do their COs, they do, will have a site inspection done. A lot of times with these, with the, is there one necessarily done when there's an allocation? No. I guess that's something that we could explore. But when they, obviously too, they, if they're adding another bedroom, they'd have to reapply and get their CO changed from three to four correctly. Sometimes unfortunately, that's only done a lot of times at the time of sale.
That's what I feel like.
So there has been some talk in the planning and zoning department about trying to have follow-ups regarding, because most of the time and I'm not sure what the mechanism would be for current structures. It also, a lot of times for a house that's being built, the permit cycle's two years. And then at that point, it's on the zoning department to come back and essentially they should be checking to make sure the CO was issued. Because a lot of times we've gone a lot longer than that. And then by the time it comes for it to be sold, we have a problem. But we can definitely investigate how we're following up on what the actual occupancy or, you know, how many bedrooms they are allocated for.
And just to make sure there's like not, like an extra kitchen in there and stuff. Because a lot of times, we don't get these until they are for sale. And when I see one, I see these two where there's no additions to the buildings. They're just increasing. It makes you wonder how long that's been.
A lot of times, you know, it's a.
You know, that's what I would just want to ask.
Yeah, it is difficult because, you know, for example, the one at Old Village Lane, that's going from a den that currently was a den and is street changed to a bedroom. I'm sure there are places that that happens if we're not aware of it.
That's what I feel too. Something that I would just want to ask.
Yes, Bruce.
I'm not a village resident, but I guess I would just ask the board, you know, what is the intent of that? Because it seems like it's a offshoot of short-term rentals. Is the town going to do that for, with not being on the sewer system? It just seems like a kind of end around to get into someone's house. And, you know, is that, is that something that this board can do without some public input? Or is it something that the water and sewer commissioners, you know, would want, if you're going to ask for an increase? Because there was no discussion about inspecting Homestyle Hostel when you went from 20 to 40. You know, and I don't even know how they're going, how they're going to do that, but they must be doing something there. And I guess I would just caution, what's the intent? You know, it seems like it it is a little bit more like trying to get in, another way to get in. I just kind of throw that out there.
Thank you. Did you make a?
I'll make a motion on these two, but I did, it's something that I've really thought about because I just feel like when it comes to the sale, that that just seems to be when we're triggered to it. And just want to make sure I said that. I'll make a motion that we accept
80 Old Village.
80 Old Village Lane from a three-bedroom to a four-bedroom.
I would second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I just have one second. And the other one is the accepting the 109 Upper Loop from a three-bedroom allocation to a two additional bedrooms, so to a five bedroom.
I would second, second that also. All in favor? Aye. So 7D would be to approve the hazard mitigation plan.
That is unchanged as proposed at our previous meeting. We've had copies of it, you know, we've had a little bit of a change because Malia, who is working on it for Mark, has moved on. So Logan has kind of stepped in, but it's the same plan that the select board has since approved. We reviewed at our last meeting. It went back to the state. And now it returns to us for approval, unchanged.
You need a motion?
Yes.
So make a motion that we accept the local.
Approve the local.
Local hazard mitigation plan.
I would second. I would second that.
By way of discussion, just so I do, I am here to answer your questions if necessary. This is mostly formality. But yeah, this has been kind of a long process to get to this point. And this helps us a lot with you know, FEMA reimbursement rates and things like that all go up is when we haven't adopted LHMP and those kinds of, the crux of this is just making sure that we're in a better position for the next.
Disaster.
We've talked on floor there somewhere. The next time there is some, some local hazard that we're in a better place and we have better reimbursement for doing.
Excellent. We did vote on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okeemaw seasonal update.
Thank you. Probably Bob here, the only one that didn't see this, didn't hear this before, so. So Julie, you were the one saying, okay, good. You and Patrick were there. But thank you for allowing me to be on the agenda tonight. You know, Okeemaw had a strong summer. It was especially stronger in the months of August, September, or October. We saw increased visitation with summer activities. Season ended on vigorous Peoples' Day and weather affected the last two days. That Saturday was our busiest day of the summer for senior chairlift rides. But we weren't able to open on Sunday and Monday because of weather. So this summer, we've done a lot of different types of maintenance. Some highlights are some new flooring in the clock tower base lodge. And we put new siding on the Sugar House, which has probably been 25 years since that was done. So it looks really, looks really sharp. Snowmaking, you know, increased expansions were done on Timberline Trail with new pipe and added, we work with Efficiency Vermont and we have low, low energy snow guns. We bought 15 new ones. We also have five new fanguns, which fanguns require they have their own small compressor on the gun. So just needs the water to go by, but you need electricity to run the compressor. But they run in lower temperature or higher temperatures too. And then we, South Face Village had received permit. We don't have anything to do with the management up there. We make the snow and groom. They allow, their lift allowed to come onto our property. But they're opening a new trail over in the South Face Village called Rossi's Run and the left snowmaking. And we installed the new 100-foot carpet in the clock tower base area. Extended the carpet that we have over in Jackson Gore. We were finding that only a 50-foot carpet wasn't allowing the new kids learning to have enough experience. And they were going to a bigger carpet and the progression wasn't going as, as quickly as we wanted it to. We are returning snow tubing for the Jackson Gore area. But we will be discontinuing ice skating for this season. We've really struggled with making ice, even with the refrigeration, being able to keep it and make the ice there. So we're going to not have that this year and then reevaluate. We aren't selling any of our equipment. We're just going to not do it this year. And then of course, with some of our food and beverage, we've added some things here and there, but pretty much normal. We had six weddings this summer and two of them were at a Summit Wedding Site. We had some chips that were laid down. It was in front of the Summit Lodge. It was very popular, probably for guests to be able to do that. Another big, a big change is we're adding what's called My Epic Gear. It's a subscription service for equipment for snowboards and skis. There's over 200 different options between boots and skis and snowboards for people to, to use. As a subscription service, you pay, become a member, pay a subscription, then you pay each time you use it. It is not a rental program and it's something that, there's 12 resorts. There were four last year. We're one of the eight that got added to it this year. So we're looking forward to being part of that. Winter focus, you know, we'll begin snowmaking as soon as it's cold weather. Might even be a few hours coming up this weekend. We'll see, but we're ready to go. We have an anticipated opening up before Thanksgiving with our normal opening, you know, footprint. And our focus is going to be on operational excellence, guest and employee experience. And our staffing is, is going along well. We have about a 65 to 68% return rate for staff. And our employee housing, we have a similar footprint to what we had, had last season. So in closing, I want to thank, you know, Town Manager Brendan and the department heads for their support and all of us working together. You know, thank this board and the town, you know, Town Manager for paving your section of the access road. Really appreciate that. I think it's done well. It makes the road look good. You know, the team's done a good job with that. And we really appreciate the relationship and the support that we have with all the department heads and all of you. So I'll close there. If there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Bruce. I have, have seen all that work going on up there. I do frequent in the summer quite a bit still. And, you know, it looks, it looks good and really, we had to do that prior to the access road. That, that was not that much of a struggle. It was just figuring out how we get it done. So thank, thank you for working with us. And are the, I guess, are the bus stops still going to be similar to last year? I know you had, you had a lot of working buses to the village.
Yep. So we continue to use them over. We, we pay the mover to operate the village, village routes.
So I think that works really well to help, help move people from down here to up on the mountain. So and I don't think we had any trouble with, with traffic last year. I think it went well. We've worked that out. So I'm happy and I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, this was brought up last night at the select board meeting. But I think we should give a moment of silence to Bruce and his family for the loss and passing of Bruce's death.
Yes. This is for, we'll have a moment of silence for Stu. Thank you. And I'd like to say, you know, we all, we all knew Stu and very, very happy that we knew him. So.
Yeah, he lived a good, lived a good life. Eight years. We'd all take that. He's, he really did. And thank you very much for your thoughts and prayers, all of you.
Thank you. Now, consider appropriation of remaining ARPA funds.
So that's just basically, we have our remaining ARPA funds that are left that earn the amount of $32,936.04. That is the remaining balance of what we did not appropriate for paving of the bottom portion of the access road. You know, we've done, the town as a whole and the village, we've done a good job of, you know, appropriating money. It's, you know, sometimes it's harder to give money away than it is to spend it. You know, we did $10,000 for part of, you know, with the town for the auditorium and conference room upgrades.
Which we are using.
Which we are using, which is fantastic. $30,000 for Dorsey Park Rehab, which will be pushed into part of some of the projects over there. Again, $35,000 for pavement, paving of the bottom portion of the access road. And we originally appropriated $125,000 for sidewalks. I, I think the easiest thing to do is to push the $32,936.04 into the sidewalks. We know they need them. So anywhere that we can improve our village infrastructure, that just seems to be the cleanest and most appropriate use and probably effective use in my, in my view. I just feel, you know, we don't have any other requests in the village. So that would give us, if we added that, that would be what?
157?
So that would give us. Yeah. Yeah. 157. 157, 936, which would give us a pretty good jump on some of the sidewalks.
Which I would, I would like to see. I do use the sidewalks quite a bit. And we've, we're pretty grossly behind on keeping up with, with that. I don't know how, how you feel, Julie.
I'm okay with that. I was worried about, you know, like the, yesterday there was a good presentation on the playground. I wanted to see something for children in that money, but I feel like we're moving ahead with the grants.
The 35,000, you know, that's going to be tight, or the 30,000, that would be very hard. It's going to be, I think we're in a good place.
And then explain that he had like 56,000. So that, that feels good to me. As long as we've included everybody.
I think we have.
Young, old, everybody. I think that's a really good suggestion. Do you need a motion for that?
We do. Just a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve the remaining funds of $32,936.04 to be added to the sidewalk fund.
I would second that. All in favor? Aye. Municipal manager updates.
So just a few. Dam spillways have been, on site three and site five have pretty much been completed by Markowski excavation. Those are wrapping up today and tomorrow, I believe they're actually trucking some material from site five over to site one as part of the larger dam rehabilita- dam rehabilitation project. Because in that grand scheme of the major project for all four dams, site one and two are under engineering and design right now. So the subpart of that includes drilling, test drills. But they need some of that area over by site one, site two is so steep that they have to build a ramp down to get the drill down. So Markowski is able to bring some of that material over, build a ramp, and we're all happy people. It's a, you know, it's a big deal. You know, I know that when I started here, you know, the dam is dams and it's been dams for a while here and this is a big step in that process. It really, it really is. So that was kind of exciting. We had a site visit over there and you know, it's, it's moving along. Local options tax. We have had a couple of good meetings with our, our local options task committee. We had a local option tax forum here about a week and a half ago, was it, Julie? And was it really positive feedback? You know, we had a lot, there was a very, you know, a good turnout. I bet there were 20, 30 people that came. A lot of positive talk, you know, and encouraging people to ask questions in the community. You know, get out and talk about it, what really the, the benefits will be for, for our residents. So that was a good thing. I think we'll have the next month or so, you know, we'll have another one. And as we get closer to a potential presentation for a vote in March, we'll have another meeting. But the big thing is, you know, if you have questions to, we're really telling people to get out and ask people who have been to the meetings or may know somebody who has, because that's really how you're probably going to get your best information and get your best. And my door is always open, so you come down and talk to me, but you know, talking to someone that you have breakfast with or coffee with is probably, is the best way to get that information out. Mergers process is, is moving very well. Again, the merger committee, we've had some meetings there. Met with the council that we're working on with that process. And she provided us with just yesterday, a draft copy of the town village or a town charter that would be for the merger. That's something that we'll provide to these boards. Probably it's, we move forward, we'll poll members from each board to look at it and talk and say, what do you think? You have your thoughts, opinions on this as we move forward? You know, having a draft charter for the town for what that looks like is, is a big step. You know, that really is kind of comical that it's, you know, and I won't, maybe not comical, but it's not much different than what we're doing right now, you know, other than it's actually on paper. So getting that out and then having some public conversation about what exactly this looks like, but really on the surface, there's no, there's really no change a lot. So that's, that's a big thing. We're going to be meeting with John Neal with Chief Billings and Acting Chief Mary Mancino from the ambulance department, the 18th. As a pre-winter meeting, we have usually a good meeting, you know, our relationship, we're very fortunate that, you know, our relationship with Okeemaw and with Bruce and, you know, my communication lines with Bruce and John Neal are, are constant. So that makes, I think, our lives a lot easier down here. It's, you know, it's very fluid. So we work very well together, but you know, kind of getting involved and saying, all right, you know, this is what we did last year, this outworked is a good thing. Bill Street Bridge should be fully open to pedestrians next week around there. Look forward to, you know, having a plan of attack for, you know, a public opening down, a little bit down the road. Joint meeting of the planning commission, trustees, and the select board is being held on the 19th at 5:30.
I want to check yesterday.
I told Alicia, if I say this, throw something at me. You know, I say, hey, come on.
Why don't you do it?
She might, you know, I'm not going to have to ask her twice. So that will be here upstairs. It will be on a number of different things. A big conversation last night at the select board level was short-term rentals and, you know, how that pertains to life safety. We've been down the short-term rental registry once already. This is, I won't say this is completely different because it's still the same regarding short-term rentals, but I think on the tail, tails of you know, the fire in town two weeks ago, it's raised some, a little more concerns regarding life safety and what, what we're aware of and, you know, what we take, you know, and I had a conversation with someone today about it and I understand, you know, that there's probably no, even if we were to sit on our hands and we weren't to do anything, there's probably no liability to the town, to be honest with you. There's not, but you know, ethically and, you know, how do we really feel about that, about knowing that, you know, we may have a problem that we're not addressing in terms of occupancy? How's it going? So. No, are you looking? Upstairs. Okay. So we'll, we're going to, this, you know, I think it's going to be good to revisit some of that a little get, a little bit more. You know, you know, obviously voting here today had a very good turnout. It seems a lot of first-time voters. A lot of people registering to vote, which is, is a positive. I saw the same thing. I went to vote in Cavendish earlier and there were a ton of people registering to vote. So I think that's if we take anything away from the next 12, 24, 48 hours, that's a positive. You know, I know that it's going to be, it's going to be in a try, you know, one way or the other. I was very happy to see a number of people, people that had a stack on their desk of people registering. So it was good. So the turnout and, you know, this, the voting here runs like a well-oiled machine. So it's really, I just kind of smile and look at the woman and say, do you need anything? No, we have. And she's just rock and roll. So she has a lot of help and it's. And she's just rock and roll, so she has a lot of help and it's, it runs seamlessly. So it's nice to see. You know. It is nice to have a flow of traffic constantly through the building, cause you start to see. A lot of people that you may not see on, you know, all the time. That's all I got.
Great. We could only get people to vote every time.
Correct, yeah, it should be that way all the time, but.
But that's great. Um, other business? No other business. Set date for the next meeting, December third. Twenty twenty-four. It's already written down?
Yes, it is. It is.
Good job, somebody. Um. Sign warrant orders, I, I have done that.
I, I did it too.
And, uh, yeah. You did do that, I saw. Possible executive session?
I asked if we could do.
Oh, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
I don't know what it.
Yeah. Yep. Let's see, that would be, uh.
Personnel issue.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go home and see your brother. Did you make that motion? Oh, I missed my second.
I would second that. Send it to you, sorry, Lisa.